Good evening. This is a meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Village of Sleepy Hollow. Will you please rise with me as we recite the like of allegiance?
Our allegiance to the United States of America, to the public, to our citizens, our nation, our God, and to the Constitution of justice and law.
Please remain standing. As longtime attendees know, we use this opportunity in our regular board meetings to remember those members of our community who passed away since our last meeting. Since our last meeting, we lost Jeanne "Artif" Fraser, attended Kendall Way at the age of eighty-six. Thoughts with her family and with her friends? Thank you. Please be seated. Okay, our first order of business this evening is to reconvene the 2023 Board of Assessment Review now in session. For those of you wondering who and what that is, the Board of Assessment Review convenes every year at tax time to consider tax rates of the village. We have one item of business, and that is to approve the decisions made in this group of grievances that were given to the Board of Assessment Review. And I would entertain a motion to adopt and approve the decisions that are made in this document.
Motion to approve the master list of all the assessment changes.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed or extensions? And the resolution is approved. Can I get a motion to adjourn the Board of Assessment Review, please?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed or extensions? Board of Assessment Review is adjourned, and we will begin our regular meeting. All right, first up, we have a warrant that was... Thank you, Ms. McCarthy, for your continued work. Look forward to seeing you again in the next few weeks. First order of business in our regular meeting is to approve a warrant that was distributed earlier by the Treasurer. For the record, it's in the amount of eight-hundred-and-seventy-eight-thousand, eight-hundred-and-fifty dollars and thirty-six cents. Are there any additional questions on any item in the warrant? And so, please direct those questions to the Treasurer.
I'll make a motion to adopt the warrant.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed or extensions? And the warrant is approved.
Thank you.
The minutes of March seventh, which were also distributed earlier. Any changes, amendments, edits to those minutes?
Mr. Mayor, I noticed instead that I made it since I did amend. We closed the public hearing. I didn't indicate that.
Motion to approve the minutes of March seventh as amended.
Seconded.
And seconded. Any further discussion, comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed or extensions? And the minutes are approved. I've got a few announcements. This weekend, the Mobile Shredder is going to be back here in Sleepy Hollow. It'll be right across the street from us in the parking lot from ten to one this Saturday, March eighteenth. Hopefully, it won't catch on fire this time. It actually did happen once. Quite exciting. And our fire department took care of it very quickly and saved the vehicle. It's kind of weird to see that happen, the fire. Village elections are next Tuesday, March twenty-first. The polls will be open from six a.m. to nine p.m. Please, everyone, get out and vote. I believe it's too late at this point to get an absentee ballot, so please get to your polling place and vote. If you have any questions about that, you can reach out to the clerk, who can help you figure out where your polling place is. And her number is three-six-six-five-one-oh-six. Or you can call the Board of Elections at nine-nine-five-five-seven-hundred. Also coming up soon, not this weekend, but a week and a half from now roughly, the Sleepy Hollow Marathon, which is always a lot of fun and for folks like me who watch it and don't run in it. But it's March twenty-fifth, Saturday, March twenty-fifth. It starts at nine-thirty, and it runs through different parts of the village and the preserve. And it's really great. I urge you all to get out there and support the runners. Okay, we'll move on to reports from our department heads. And first up, we'll start with Bill Batson, Communications. Mr. Batson.
Thank you. Can I ask Bill Slush from...
Yes.
Thank you. Good evening. I require some gentle touch there. So, I'm going to talk about these topics. I last saw everyone in December. I'll do a little bit about social media and the Facebook page, which is our primary social media tool, a little bit about press relations, some print, digital, and some kind of niche, non-traditional outlets that we're working with. I'll talk about the website, but particularly tonight, Sleepy Hollow Connected. And then some ongoing projects, outreach, emergency alerts, travel stories, which is an app that Sleepy Hollow has supported through some funding from the state, Dropbox, which is something that the trustees had asked for at a previous meeting, and then marketing for the Legend Cirque, which is coming up in the Halloween season. So, the Facebook page received in this last period of time about twice as many views as we received in the December report that I gave you. That was twenty-eight hundred. We, in March, had fifty-five hundred posts reaching people and fifteen hundred engagements. Engagements are counted as if somebody reacts to a post, if they comment, if they share it. If they share, if they actually view a photo, you get more engagements. We had nineteen new followers, and right now we have around thirty-one hundred total followers to the website. That's more than we had in December, but it's sluggish. I'd like to see those numbers grow. The top engagements that we had were the Sleepy Hollow Mayor Ken Ray accepting the four-point-five-million-dollar grant from New York State. Received quite a lot of traffic, as did the summary of last year. In early January, we posted twelve photographs from Margaret Fox that kind of summarized the year. And like we see, the more photos that you type put up, the more engagements that you get. So on the...
Who's posting? Sorry.
I post, Paula posts, and Diana Loa posts as well. So there's three primary people.
Do other people have the ability to?
I'm not exactly sure. No, I don't think so.
Only those three?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, on to, because I have a lot of topics, so sorry about this. So, on press relations, we were... An article was brought to our attention the day after that award was given to the village, the DRI. And an article did appear in The Times' Herald Record, but oddly, it did not include Sleepy Hollow. And a press statement had been given, supplied to the governor. The mayor spoke at the event, but when the article came out, it didn't include us. So I was able to reach Mike Randall, the author and reporter. And once before, actually with another low-head reporter, Karim Said, who's now a spokesperson for the thruway, I was able to convince a reporter to, on the second version of a digital piece, to put in a quote. It was missing. But Mike Randall had never done that in his entire career, he said. But I prevailed upon him. I said, "It was in the governor's release. We were there. Can you do that?" He never... I... He never called and said he would do it, but when we looked a couple of weeks later, you were over here. So, the next one, this is press that we've gotten recently. We were awarded funds to produce in 2024 a music festival. So our friends at River Journal ran an entire piece about it. Now, these are more non-traditional approaches. I'm meeting with the communications team from Shehak on Friday to discuss a press release to bundle all of the environmental-related events that we're doing in March and May for a press release, hopefully to get some feature articles, but also just to get into everybody's calendar. And one of the things we're going to include, we were designated the... We got an award from the Arbor Day Foundation. We're considered a Tree City USA. And we've been given that designation for twenty-one years, but it's a good line to put in there. There are three thousand six hundred cities around the country that have that designation. So we'll include that as part of the promotion for our environmental events. This was something that we learned about. We didn't generate it. But the Discover blog listed Sleepy Hollow as one of the nine fairy tale destinations in the United States. You know, these niche websites don't necessarily all get a lot of traffic, but what you can do is repurpose and amplify it. So, you know, we posted it, and we hope that other people read it. We think that there was an outlet in Britain that may have read some of this press that we're getting. This program called Humans of the World reached out to the village. This is, I took this screenshot. This is Humans of Burlington, Vermont. And it shows you the kind of diversity of the community that they went for. It's an hour-and-twenty-long, hour-and-twenty-minute-long program that originally airs in Britain, but because of, you know, cable can show everywhere. So we're in talks with one of the presenters, Erica. And I'm going to be speaking to her on Monday about coming to Sleepy Hollow. So that's, I think, the last press relations piece. So, Sleepy Hollow Connected. So, we're working on getting a proposal to the Board to upgrade the Civic Plus site that we currently have. I'm having trouble finding comparable, comparative companies to work with. There's a group of village administrators that Anthony works with, and I think a large portion of them, a good number, like up to, he said, ten, work with Civic Plus. But because it's a bid, we're trying to find someone else to give us something. I have a bid from them that expires in April, I think. But in the meantime, there's information that I do want to share. So we've been working with a consultant, Tom Schumacher. And we have put together a website. This is just, this is called a clickable comp, but I only have screenshots of it, so I can't navigate it. But this is something that will cover the spirit of a comprehensive plan. It will have pages that talk about parks and, I'm sorry, the comprehensive plan, the LDC projects, grants that the villages received, and projects that include parks and recreation, traffic and right-of-way, environmental enhancement, climate, a smart task force, and also cultural events. I'll show another picture of it. This is what the homepage would look like. These are, these are the, this is the clickable comp link that we have. And if people want to see it, we can provide that to them. So that, to the left, is the grant page that would list grants and categories. Then that's the LDC page, and the major grants that fall underneath the LDC. And then the projects, the thumbnails have an image of the project. And when you click on them, it has more narrative about the project and timelines, and also links to the documents, like the motions that enable them to proceed.
And how does this link up with our current website?
It would be, it would be one of the, so on the main page, right now, there is a comp plan menu option. It's one of the first three big ones. I think it's events and then comp plan. So that would be very visible on the main page.
But, so like, there's an LDC page on Sleepy Hollow Connected, and there's also an LDC page on the website, and then the LDC also has their own website. Are they all going to be updated with the same information, or is it...
Well, this would be, I mean, I understand that. So we would have to talk about the navigation with that question in mind.
Yeah, I think. Or what's the point of having three?
Sure. Well, what we could easily do is include this under comp of projects that grew out of the comp plan and just make sure that they're credited as falling under the LDC. The reason we created an LDC page is we wanted to make it clear that that was the entity that was overseeing the projects. They're the larger ones, like the DPW and Sleepy Hollow Common.
So let's say the DPW is another example. Is there going to be a page about the new DPW?
Yes.
But will there also be one on our village website?
Well, I don't know about, I have, we'll have to have a conversation with Dan about LDC, but this would be the one for the village.
Okay. So I guess I'm just confused, because let's say we want to put out information about the new DPW. Would it go on the village website and Sleepy Hollow Connected?
This would just be a news item on the page. Yeah, this would be, yeah, yeah. I don't think, I understand in terms of having a page that is called LDC, that could create confusion.
But, yeah.
I think it's more intended...
Putting LDC to the side, any topic.
This is more intended to be real detail-oriented, so right from the beginning of the project to current. You know, so you could track that specific project and all. Whereas on the village website, we have so much items, it's just quick updates.
We'd kind of do that now with Visit Sleepy Hollow. Like, there's a sub-link on our website. We could probably do, you know, learn more at sleepyhollowconnected.com. And then if people want to dive deeper, they go, they go here.
It's good to have, I mean, I understand that confusion is important, but it's good to have information in multiple places, because it's like, somebody once said that the math, digital math is, you know, one plus one equals eleven. The more places that something is seen, it's exponential, so.
I just worry that it will be confusing about where to find this information.
So we will definitely be mindful of that as we roll it out.
There's a heading, Traffic in Right-of-Way?
Yes.
Would that include initiatives around walkability?
Absolutely. Yeah, there's a traffic mitigation. Just let me see. I can't, it's all on that computer, so I can't expand the image. But there is a photograph of one of the plazas that has the pot of plants and seating areas. So yeah, definitely. And then we'll, you know, you have access to it, so you can guide us.
Maybe we could find a more descriptive term for that header.
Okay, sure. Yeah, I don't know. I'm having a glitch here. So I'll go on to the next slide. Sorry. All right, so, community groups. I've had a chance to have a couple of talks with the Phillips Manor Improvement Association. They have a, Phillips, I'm sorry, they have a newsletter that comes out once a month. I have been able to provide some content. The food compost program was in the January newsletter and the February newsletter. News about the DRI grant. I continue to meet with them at their, you know, at their discretion. The meeting on Friday with Sleepy Hollow Manor Association. And then any other groups that do want to meet, that have information that they think should be, you know, shared with the village, or information that they want from the village to be shared with their members. I'm available to do that.
Shar Weigel manages the 10591 calendar. The community calendar, it basically has everything on it. Is there a way to have interaction between that and this page? Like, could we embed that in this, in this website?
Oh, sure.
You think so?
Yeah, absolutely. And I interact with Shar at Shehak meetings.
Great.
So this is another area that I know there's been some interest in focusing and expanding. Right now, we have a mass notification platform called Blackboard Connect. And when you subscribe to the newsletter on the website, when the calendars come out on a lot of the pages, both the digital and the print, we ask for people to supply email addresses and phone numbers so that if there's a water main break, or if there's a weather emergency, or any information that the village needs to get out quickly. Currently, we have twenty-five-hundred emails and about two-hundred-and-fifty phone numbers. It would be great to kind of switch those numbers, because, you know, email is kind of passive, but everybody has their phone, and text messaging is really the best way to reach people quickly. So what we're going to do is put together a campaign to urge people to get in this emergency alert network. So we'll do Facebook posts and other communications that the village has. We'll find ways to encourage people to share that information with us.
Do you have a timeline for that?
We could, I mean, I'll be reporting the next time I sit down with you guys. So over the next few months, I think we'd like to increase...
I would like to get it done as fast as possible, because I know there was a lot of upset people of the water break the last time, and they were not able to connect, not knowing what's happening. They were like, you know, making the calls to us.
So if you could give me guidance on where you think, you know, the requests can be best placed, because we want to make sure that we, you know, contact the entire community. But yeah, this is obviously very important, because it deals with...
Yeah, we can sit down and start talking about it later.
I like that very much. So, travel stories, I mentioned this earlier. This is an app that, it's fascinating. Once you have it on your phone, whether you're... It has a function, so if you're driving, it alerts you to Sleepy Hollow in nine miles. But if you're on your bike, it alerts you every couple of blocks. You can detect through the tracking, the speed you're going. And if you're walking, then it's a, you know, it's a walking tour, a digital walking tour on your phone. So it launched during COVID. It didn't get a lot of the attention that it required because of everything else that took precedence. So the historic Hudson River towns, the thruway, and communications reps from Tarrytown and Irvington are meeting on the twenty-eighth to discuss the relaunch for this, which will be in March. There was an interest in having a Dropbox account for the village, so the village does now have a Dropbox folder. It's just starting to be used. So the timing couldn't have been better for Diana Loa, because of all the work she does and all the information that she gathers in images and the videos. I think she had two phones that she was unable to share any photos from because they were so full of content that she had created. So there is a folder for her that she, it's a shared folder, so she has access. So she started sending me photos and uploading them on her own as well. And there's also photos for Shehak, so the committee has access to put photos in and to take photos out. And Legend Cirque. So building on the success of last year's performances, we're developing a marketing plan. We're hoping to maybe get onto one of the morning live television programs in September, reach out to Metro North, and maybe have some advertising in the stations or on the trains. And we're also excited about the prospect of bringing people to the East Parcel to look forward and envision it as a Sleepy Hollow Common. And gives the people a lot of reasons, families a lot of reasons to return to Sleepy Hollow if we can get them to one of these events. So we want to sell out more shows, and we're going to be working on the marketing plan. So I wanted to just quickly go back to the, to the... We have to go to the website. There is a video that will introduce... So yeah, this is the intro. This is by Tim Rayjek.
To make something like this happen, there are reasons. Didn't happen before.
Hi, I'm Ken Ray. I've been the mayor of Sleepy Hollow since 2009. The village's concrete has planned this development over a number of years through a public process. It brought residents from every neighborhood together, as well as our business owners in and around Newton Avenue. Together, we drafted a document that reflects our values and states our vision for the future of Sleepy Hollow. It was ratified by the Board of Trustees in 2019. Here, in one place, you'll find reports, drawings, and videos that we are using for our ongoing capital projects. As you look through this website, you will meet our historical designers, architects, and engineers. Our historic village, like so many villages in the Hudson Valley, is grounded in change. Change is difficult. Let's acknowledge that as we move forward. In Sleepy Hollow, we're looking to harness the forces of change to create a 21st-century village that both honors our unique natural beauty and history and embraces diversity in all forms. In the 20th century, the singular driving force in our village, the massive North Tarrytown General Materials Assembly Plant, who's located where our main street, Beekman Avenue, meets the Hudson River, and all encompass nearly a hundred acres. That's the size of the Abbey Park City in Oregon, Alabama. At one time, over two thousand people were deployed there, and accounted for half of the village's assets. When it closed in June of ninety-six, the village's very identity would change. In December of that year, we voted to change the nomination from North Tarrytown to Sleepy Hollow. That election was not without rank. The vote was thirteen-hundred and four to seven-hundred and ten. Change is difficult. Other changes, the iconic bridge, the Tapet Z, was demolished and replaced by a larger modern bridge with a new name. Our community hospital, Phelps, is now part of the tremendous network, Northwell Avenue. And sixty-six acres of the land where the GM Assembly Plant once stood is becoming a new neighborhood developed as Edgeham Hudson. By the time Edge is completed, five to seven years, our population will improve by three. Our median income will increase substantially. That means how we approach the U.S. state and the federal government for funding will have to change. Voting patterns will change. Village government and the school district will by necessity grow. All of this will affect the character of our village. Edge will include supermarkets, a hotel, restaurants, and other shops, and will enhance the vibrancy of this new neighborhood, and will also attract new visitors. We expect there will be greater activity around Beekman Avenue, more open storefronts, and restaurants, more people. Our challenge is to make sure that that change is a positive force for everyone living and working here and now. It is a goal clearly stated to the Concrete Nation. We have been and continue to be a proud immigrant community. Since the plantation at Phillipsburg Manor ceased functioning in the early 19th century, yes, the plantation will then rely upon slave labor. Portuguese, Italians, the Irish that settled here, is in search of a better life, working at the Crookna Aqueduct, and factories like the General Motors plant. Today, we are home to a new generation of immigrants from Central and South America. That, too, is change. Another goal of the Concrete Nation Plan calls for action to reverse damage to the environment. In the final settlement, GM, which took more than 10 years of painful negotiations, the village received two parcels of land. We determined that both should become public space, parkland, preserved and curbed to be used. The first parcel, now the Sleepy Hollow River Rock, is along the Hudson Shore of Beekman Avenue, to Kingsland Point Park. It passes by the Sleepy Hollow Lighthouse, where Westchester County is undertaking a $3-plus million restoration. The second parcel of land is on the east side of the Metro North Trail, and will be known as the Sleepy Hollow Common. Here, the village is creating a new park, designed by environmental landscape artist Marty Reddick. Marty is from New Wilding, the last legs of the McAnaco River, and has been rated shoreable. Space for a new DPDW facility has been carved out of the back, and it will hopefully be created, so that it won't flood and storm surge. The facility is being designed by architects Jennifer Sage and Peter Coon, known for their work in sustainability. These new public spaces will be points of connection serving our various neighborhoods, each with its own unique history and heritage. They will connect Kingsland Point Park to DeVries Park, DeVries to Phillipsburg Manor, the old Dutch church and St. Yalla Cemetery, to the Crookna Aqueduct, the Rockefeller State Park Reserve, and the Westchester North Trail system. People will now be able to travel to walk between Terrytown to Sleepy Hollow, along the Hudson River. Barnmark Park, the neighborhood's off-the-Street Avenue, will be able to connect to the common via the replay village street running down to the lawn past the old K. A. W. building. Like the Hudson River itself, the traffic that needs connected public spaces will flow both ways, whether a foot, bicycle, skateboard, or car. DeVries Park is being upgraded, we're restoring this curb line, and it hands a natural aesthetic and provides a better habitat for wildlife. The common will include space for active recreation, ball fields, tennis courts, volleyball courts. We'll have significant space set aside for passive recreation and solitude as well. And we're creating spaces for community art and the presentation of cultural events. I want to take a moment to thank everyone who has helped get us here. First and foremost is the village staff, led by Anthony Giacchio, the Building Department, led by Sean McCarthy, the Sleepy Hollow Local Development Corporation, and Dan Brier, the Legal Teams at Crosscarroll Rose and McCarthy Fender, and Janet Gandolfo, the Engineering Team at WSP, the thinkers and doers and urban strategies by Clyde and Christian P. Palermo, and Rocky Richards, and Jenny Billman. Charles McKinney has been the guiding light as our master plan. The Board of Trustees are looking about incorporation of Doug's extraordinary work as well. Thank you to Governor Kathy Hochul, Senate Majority Leader Andrea Stewart-Cusson, State Senator Pete Hartman, the Senator Tom Avanati, Westchester County Executive George Lattimer, Deputy County Executive Ken Jenkins, and our county legislator, Marty Flitzke.
Thank you. Any questions?
Ken, I'm sorry, this is such a great video, and I'm deeply impressed that I'm a member of the audience, I'm a proreader and a copy editor, there's a spelling mistake, there's an image of a Sleepy Hollow horseman, and it says German immigrant, that's a funny joke, but the word should be immigrant with an i.
Oh, my, oh, very good. Thank you. Tim, this is why you show, this is the soft, I don't think anybody, this is the, this is the premiere, the soft launch, so thank you for that. I'll, I'll make sure that Tim knows that. Well, thank you, and I'm available, if people have any other questions about my presentation or anything, please reach out. And we'll work on the.
Yes, please.
The, collecting those numbers right.
Yep.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Popcorn next time? Any other questions for you, Bill? Okay, thank you. You're welcome. Okay, next up, Mr. Smith, and Department of Public Works.
We don't know why it's not going to think of this. Good evening, Mayor and Board. My presentation for February and a little bit of January. I don't have it on here, it didn't make the cut, but we'll talk about snow for the season. The storm we had, February 28th, we had five inches of snow, used 66 tons of salt, and 140 and a half hours of overtime. That was our one event for the season so far. 2022, at this time, we have 14 events, and used 422 tons of salt and 564 hours of overtime. So as everybody knows, it's a little different. All right, so the highway, we were busy without any snow, so we've been able to concentrate on pothole repairs that have come up. Typical road edge cleanups, we've been working hard on Sleepy Hollow Road, Sleepy Hollow Road, to cut back some of the larger weeds that have been growing. Any reachable tree trimming we were working on, but as I'll point out later, we now have a bucket truck, so we'll get a little higher. We repaired the drain, causing a sinkhole on Fremont Road. Then we cleaned the path from Route 9 in the area around the retention basin above Fremont Pond. That's that photo on the top right. We installed concrete curving for the future exercise area in Kingsland. We installed a fence at the end of the road where the biodeck was removed, there was just some, some barricades there that didn't feel safe, so we put a fence in there. We replaced the decayed wood from the elevated flowerbed at DeVries Park, when you first go in. We repaired a wall with some water damage at the firehouse on Lawrence Street from drain. And then we had the St. Patrick's Day Parade this past weekend, where we had cleanup before and after. On sanitation end, our, that's our monthly solid waste numbers. January, we had 418 tons, February 275. And we're looking into adding maybe a couple different, or one different food scrap drop-off site, but we're, we'll, we'll see where's a good spot.
Mr. Smith, any idea where the big drop-off from January, February is?
No, just, well, it's a few days shorter, but, but I think maybe after the holidays, people cleaning up, it could be. There, the numbers are pretty typical from last year, I should have had that on here, but I looked at that myself. And they kind of bounce around. We're also busy on the water and sewer department. We had a sinkhole in front of 142 Beekman Avenue. That was that sinkhole on the top right there, which went to the double yellow line to basically the curb line. There was no dirt underneath the road. There was a leaking bin and water tap that was leaking for a long time. We were able to repair that and fix that. Main break on Route 9 and 117, where it was a, we repaired a four-inch water main. Then there was a main break in front of 311 North Broadway, where Javelco is doing their work, underneath the 18 inches of concrete curb. That'll be repaired. And then the, we had a main break on North Washington, the weekend of March 4th and 5th, that, not that water for a lot of people, but Paladino was able to help us repair that. There were multiple main breaks after the storm from the day before washed away most of the dirt supporting the main. We had a sinkhole on 100 Rice, where we replaced 20 feet of drain pipe that was just rotted out from underneath, and then we repaired the catch basin wall there. Regeneron had a leak on their 12-inch sewer force main on Route 9, and we helped them find it, and they asked us to stay and help them as they went along to make those repairs throughout the weekend. And in front of 14 Merlin, there was a sewer collapse, where we replaced 10 feet of sewer pipe. And starting in the next couple of weeks, we're going to start to replace the antenna, the antennas to the water meters. We'll send out some information as to where we're going and where we're going to start, and we're going to try to get those done within the next few months.
Ken, I have a quick question about the Regeneron. I mean, they're technically in the town of Mount Pleasant, not in the village of Sleepy Hollow, was there that water pipe that would, that needed to be repaired? Is that portion in Sleepy Hollow? How does, how did that work out?
Their, their sewer main went from their, their campus at Rockwood Road, all the way to in front of Phelps. So when it was surfacing on Route 9, we figured out where it was coming from, we had old maps that showed going to actually, to IBM? Yeah, I think to IBM. And so they took it over at that point. But they, they are going to reimburse us for a time.
I guess that's kind of what I was getting at.
Yeah.
But they ran out of water district.
They are in a water district.
Yeah, we provided water.
We, we have a meter there in the sewer. Apparently, we had a sewer meter there at 1.2.
Thank you for clarifying that.
And they were really happy with us, Dave. And they responded very well, too. We received our new bucket truck in what I believe was record time. We ordered a replacement back truck that we expect late in 2024, and the diesel tank that failed a tightness test in October, we had removed, and they took it away this morning. That's the size of the diesel tank right there, with those two machines, that got it out somehow. The other thing that I didn't put on here, but Bill mentioned earlier, was we got the Tree City USA for 22 years again. We put those stickers up. And that's my report. Any questions?
I have one other question. Is the Pothole Killer coming back again this spring? Are we looking to make a change or no?
I wasn't thrilled with the Pothole Killer last year. I feel like it costs more money than it was worth. They didn't do as, as many potholes as I was hoping for, for the cost of it. So I think we'll work on the potholes ourselves for this year.
Two things, since we have the bucket truck, can we plug in the lights that are between Teresa and Kendall in the trees? I see like.
I think, I see the plug or a GFI.
Yeah, they're outplugged in. And then, I was going to go out there with a ladder. I'm glad I didn't do it.
Completely on your own, just like I shouldn't have.
Maybe we're still looking to that there is streetlights that are out, so I can pinpoint that to some of them.
Yeah, let me know.
I know there's one in Washington, it's out. I know a residence mentioned about a light here in Aden or Beekman, in North Broadway, I'm not sure that was fixed.
We had that fixed.
They were fixed?
No, it was fixed, yeah.
Okay, so, yeah. Those are the lights, thank you.
Yeah, we can't, we don't fix the lights ourselves, because the, we don't have an electrician on staff, so if it's a bigger job, it's just not safe. So we still contract that out.
And that, that would apply to the LED conversion, correct? Yeah, okay. And then one more question, although this might be a question for the chief when he speaks, but the three parking spots that we wanted to close on Beekman Avenue, at Pecanico, and then there's one at Cortland, that, you know, hinges on the apron, the ADA apron. Is there anything that we can do now, before we get these planters? Because I think it's going to take, it's probably going to take some time to get the, the planters. I don't know if we have like a Jersey barrier, or something like that, that we can put in place?
We could probably just put barricades there, if you want. Yeah, I mean, they're right, they're the ones that are right in front of the ramps, right?
Yeah, yeah. So yeah, whatever, whatever you think we can do.
Yeah, we'll, we'll put something there just to block people, and then we'll work, we'll enforce them.
Yeah, it's the, it's the parking spot that's in the box, right, at the Pecanico intersection, and then the one that's at the ramp there, at the stop sign. And then it's the one that's at the ramp crossing Beekman at Cortland.
At Cortland, yeah, okay.
I had a question on the new LED light fixture, streetlights. When they're next to a house, is there like a shield or something? Because they're substantially brighter, or something that's put up to keep it from going into like second, third floor bedroom?
There's not that I've seen, but we could probably look into it. Mostly, the LED lights go straight down, and they don't have much of a spread, as opposed to the older lights. I'll look into it, though. We are, for some of the neighbors, I mean, we've been talking about looking into a lighter, like a more yellow, so it's not as bright.
Yeah, I was speaking with some people who have a new one in front of their house, and they say it's just killing them, coming straight in. So yeah, I guess that less, the more mellow tone, or a shield, either one would address that. And I've also gone around and looked at them, and I could see where they're coming from. They are much brighter, which is fine for a street, but not for a, next to a house.
If you could let me know where, I'll look in and see if there's something to do.
Okay.
Other questions for, all right, thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, Chief Buetti, of the Sleepy Hollow Police Department.
So we did have our St. Patrick's Day Parade this past Sunday. No instance report, we were able to open the avenue by 4:30, and traffic was flowing as usual throughout the inner village. This Thursday, myself and Administrator Diaccio have a meeting with our municipal liaison from ConEd, and we meet periodically just to see if there's any updates or changes. Essentially, their function would be if we had a major event where we were. Essentially, their function would be if we had a major event where we lost electricity or gas, they would actually come and sit here with us to help expedite the recovery and that restoring of that, uh, utility. Uh, we're planning for our half marathon, as the mayor mentioned, and that's always a fun day. Uh, I just wanted to give you an update on the, the pay by phone and the parking situation. So we're expected to have proposals by this Friday, and once we decide if we want to accept them or not, soon as we sign the contract, it'll be thirty days from the date of signing going to pay by phone. I would recommend, Dean, that we're, we're going this way, just putting together a parking committee, because there's a lot of options that this program will allow us to do. I know we've talked in the past about possible overnight parking permits, which there's some issues with it. One aspect you could do with this... With this app is possibly extend the parking from maybe six o'clock to eight o'clock. So I know a lot of residents have complained that they've seen people come, park the car, get picked up by another car, and then possibly go out of town. That would be a way around it is maybe, um, or maybe from twelve to two, there, there's a parking, pay for parking on local streets, like there's just options we could throw out there. Also, you can, the program allows us to do our parking lots via the app. And at that point, it would be up to you decision if, if we want to reduce it and possibly meter those spots during the day from like nine to five. That would be another option we could do.
That's really interesting.
So make the permit from six to eight AM, nine AM, and then, or even give them the option to pay more money to have it for the twenty-four hours. And these would be, those zones, we could roll it out without making those decisions, of course, just doing the, the regular nine to five that we do now, and then make those changes as we go on.
And are this, is this one through five places where we currently sell permits?
Right. This is the, uh, right, like this would be the Elm Street Lot, this is behind the Amelin's Court, this is the Hudson Street Lot. Like I said, these zones here are just numbers that we just picked out.
And where is P five? Is that on Broadway, or is that north?
P five, I believe that's the, uh, train station.
And P six?
P six would be, uh, Kingsland. If we want to do that. Which may be another option, um, during the park season, if you want to use this app to charge for the parking. We'd still have to man the booth, but at least there, there's no money being exchanged. Everything may be through the app. Our success for the rollout is going to be getting in front of it, visiting the different groups with Diana and the seniors, explaining how the app works. It is both in English and Spanish. We'll definitely get it out there in this gentle rollout.
And, and are all these P one through six, is it full utilization or?
Right now, we're just going to leave it as the full utilization the way it is. If the committee would just make a recommendation, they think there's need for additional parking during the day, that would be up to the board to decide.
Sorry, let me clarify. Are they all, all the spots currently sold? So like the Elm Street Lot, is it all taken or the?
General.
Yes, yes, it's full.
Everything is full?
Full. All the lots are full except the train station.
So we would have to decide if we wanted to carve out some for transient or?
Yeah.
Yeah, I just, I wouldn't, I don't know how we would manage, um, allowing people to park there during the day in somebody else's permitted spot.
Right, so we actually do, we do it across the street here.
Yeah.
Where we sell, the permit is from six o'clock at night to eight o'clock in the morning.
Mm-hmm.
And then during the day, it's village staff parking from nine to six.
Thank you, Trystie Rodriguez, for being the first board member to volunteer to be on the parking.
So I would also like to be on.
Oh, there you go.
Help you too.
Okay, all right, we have a committee. Um, thank you.
Uh, something else I think we should look at, Dean, that we're making these changes, is also, um, an amnesty program for these outstanding tickets that we have. Sarah said that she could explain the importance of getting that figure down, of that marketing balance. So.
Sure.
We have several different plans that we can go over, and, um, I think that's something else the committee should strongly look at.
We currently have one or we want to add one?
We want to have one, being that we're going to this new system and.
Got it.
Try to collect while we can.
All right, just, just to put it out there, Pay by Phone is in Tarrytown, so I think we should try to, I like Pay by Phone. I think we could try to match Tarrytown. What's the other one? Park Mobile?
Park Mobile, yeah.
Yeah.
And would we, you don't have to do all six of these locations, right?
No, 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 just.
These are the options?
Right.
Okay.
If you and Briar, Briarco started to go on, and my plane's been doing it.
Yeah, yeah.
Are the meters on, the existing meters going to also be Pay by Phone, or are we only looking at these pay station forms now?
Um, we're looking to eliminate the meters at some point. Um, having them do the Pay by Phone, it's something like seven dollars for each meter head a month for the internet connectivity.
For a kiosk? Is that what you're saying?
No, for the actual meter head to have the internet.
Oh, okay.
So would you put in a kiosk on Beekman and then all?
We would, yeah, we'd have strategically put, we don't need as many kiosks now because of the Pay by Phone. Just keep in mind, each kiosk runs anywhere from twelve to fifteen thousand.
Yeah.
Well, I, I still think you're going to have, have to have some here because there are people that are technologically challenged.
Yeah.
You have to call up my husband in a public meeting, but. He likes the quarters.
And we, we do realize that, but we're hoping the rollout, and especially with the help of our communications officer, to really help.
And if we still had kiosks, they would accept cash?
Yeah, that's what I, that's what I mean, like, to keep it something for people that just have trouble with a phone or don't have smartphone, you know.
Well, there's also an option to call in.
Oh, okay.
Oh, text too, right?
Yeah.
Oh, that's good. And so on that map, there were only six locations. Are you also considering like a Beekman Avenue kiosk, or would that be another phase?
Oh, we were, those weren't, I'm sorry, those weren't kiosk locations. Those were the, uh.
The permitted spots.
Permitted spots. The kiosk, we could, we'll have to sit down, look at it, and try to decide which is the best spot where we get the most.
And is that part of this whole decision that you're making now?
It could be, yes. But like I said, it's, it's just, we can just add it on.
Yeah.
You know, I'm assuming for the first two, two months, three months, we're still going to leave the meters in effect until we get that full transition over.
And it's license plate reader, right?
Yes, we have the license plate. It's compatible with our license, license plate meter technology where the, uh, I don't know if you ever received, I'm sure you've seen the, the two like little square things on the car. Those are actually reading your license plate and giving the officer the, um, information on it. But with it, like, so small, here, uh, Park Mobile or, or Pay by Phone will provide longitude and latitude of the area of your car, and that license plate reader will pick that up and say, this license plate is parked here and is expired. This is, this would be like the, the master sheet of the streets and the, uh, the rate of how long. And like I said, these are just examples that we plugged in. This isn't actual code.
Great.
Chief, you said the proposal, uh, from Pay by Phone is coming roughly when?
By the, it should be here by Friday.
And then we'd have thirty days from then to?
No, we have, whatever, as long as we want.
Oh.
Thirty days from signing, signing the contract.
Oh.
This should be in effect.
Gotcha.
Oh, okay.
Wow.
So one of the thing that, um, the committee should be charged with is looking at permanent parking, uh, based on, uh, residents, uh, in neighborhoods that are close to, uh, train stations, like right here, for example. So you guys will have the whole ball of wax. All right?
So, but let me clarify. The permit parking is whole rule you're talking about?
Uh, it's similar to, um, what we see in Tarrytown right now, where, um, you, they have different districts, and if you live in that district, you can park on the street, uh, during the day and, or whatever the hours may be in each, each neighborhood, but it's based on residents in the neighborhood.
And so I think my question is, right now, we have to decide on the meter aspect. Do we, I don't think we also need to decide on the permit, but do you want to also?
I want to include that in. We have a committee.
In the discussion, okay.
You guys will be looking at all the parking stuff.
Okay.
As you have recommendations, you know, coming out of the committee, of course, don't wait until everything's done. Make those recommendations. We go forward.
Okay.
Continue the work. Okay?
Yeah.
Could, you could share this spreadsheet?
Yeah, I could send this out, yeah. Like I said, nothing, it's not factual.
Right, right.
It's just an example.
But they did call out particular blocks, and they added.
Yeah, I, I believe they just used our, uh, our parking code.
Okay, great. Awesome.
That's all I have for this evening. Um, any questions, uh, comments for the, uh, chief?
I guess just same comment about those, those parking spots that we decided to close.
Yeah, we'll, we're together with, uh, Kevin, what we've done to law.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Thanks, chief. Okay, we'll move on to public comments. Uh, if you would like to address the board, you may do so on any matter. Uh, please be reminded, uh, that you're limited to three minutes. Uh, would anyone like to address the board? Uh, we'll start over the firsthand, wait, I'm sorry, ma'am. Uh, first, okay, go ahead.
Good evening. I'm Judy Nispel, one fifteen River Street. Um, on that brand new video that we just watched, you would have had to gone back many years to get that beautiful image of the Riverwalk behind Ichabod's Landing, because it hasn't looked like that in years. It's a disaster. The sinkholes have now gone beyond the chain link fence, so dogs, kids can, can fall right in. Um, it's full of weeds and danger signs. I understand it being that way temporarily, but this has been years. It's, it's really time to replace the bulkhead. I know that you did have a contractor who was supposed to do it in November, and it fell through. Um, I, I ask that when you choose a new contractor, you choose someone who can begin work right away, not a year or two down the line. Also, in that video and many other times in this room, you've talked about the DPW moving to the East Parcel because of flooding. Ichabod's Landing and eleven River Street are closer to the river than the DPW, and you're so concerned about the DPW flooding that you're moving it to the East Parcel. I think you should take into consideration the people who have homes there. Um, while you're ripping up the Riverwalk to replace the bulkhead, don't put the asphalt back. I, I read a plan just this afternoon, and it says that's what you're planning on doing is putting an asphalt walk back. Asphalt does not absorb any water. It's just going to increase the flooding. Uh, you need to look at green infrastructure, things like permeable pavers, which will absorb water, things like plants which absorb a lot of water. Different plants absorb different amounts of water. Um, and while doing this, you can also get CSC points toward our silver status. So please look at the whole project as a whole, you know, replacing the bulkhead and making the Riverwalk better and less prone to flooding. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, sir?
I'm Michael Salanti, and, uh, I, I'd like to see the board address the lighting problem with the street lamps. That's number one. And number two, the litter problem is, is just out of hand. I, I understand it. I walk down Beekman Avenue picking up litter like I do every day. When I walk up the avenue, I pick up litter like I do every day. Uh, I should have to do this. You know, Tarrytown, the village of Tarrytown rates it in the top ten of places in New York State to live, Tarrytown, and they got litter problem too. It's not just us. I mean, it's everywhere you go, even White Plains. You have to have more receptibles, and even if you have garbage cans and, and recycling bins that are right near the street and, and the litter is right next to them. And then when they do the recycling, okay, whatever falls off the truck, I don't know whether you use a dump truck or what, what kind of truck besides the, uh, the garbage trucks. Every Thursday, I'm picking up garbage, even on Broadway, big, um, containers. I mean, uh, you know, paper, paper, you know, uh, packing. Uh, I'd like to wish everybody run for election, uh, reelection or election, uh, the best of luck. Uh, I, I don't know what the, I heard the Highway Boardman speak about the flooding problem. There's a flooding problem on Valley Street. All right, in front of one twenty-four Valley Street, I mean, it's really bad. I don't know if it was corrected yet. I know the street lights are still out. Got lights on Lawrence Avenue are out, two, two twenty-two North Washington Street. I, I brought it up a month ago. The light's still out. I mean, what's going on? What's going on? And Tarrytown, ha, ha, that rate, one of the top ten communities to live in in New York State, where do we live? Where, where is Sleepy Hollow? Where do we live? If we had a cleaner and brighter community team to invite potential residents to come and live in this village, they would come here, but they see all litter, they don't come here. I wouldn't want to live in a dump. I want to live in a nice, bright, clean place. I've been living here most of my life. I've lived in other communities. I did come back here in two thousand seven, and, uh, and ever since then, I've been picking up litter. It's over fifteen years. Fifteen years I pick up litter. I, I picked up tons of litter off the street, off the sidewalk, off the street, whatever.
Mr. Salanti?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, but your three minutes are up?
All right, thank you.
Okay. Would anyone else like it? Yes, sir.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Thanks for having me. My name's Greg Hayton. I live at one seventeen River Street. I'm a neighbor of Judy Nispel's, and there are some other members of our community here from Ichabod's. I just want to, you know, mention that we participated in some of the, uh, the debate and have given feedback on the bulkhead repair project many years back. Um, we waited a long time for the engineering report to come in. The engineering report spelled out three methods of repair or replacement. Uh, you know, one at, I think, two point four, one at one point seven million, uh, the other one at maybe one point five, one point four million, and, uh, we came here and spoke, made public comment, uh, to select the cheapest version. But it wasn't just the cheapest version, because we really appreciate what the board has done here, what the mayor has done here to our riverfront. Our riverfront is the most valuable asset in this community. Yet, for almost ten years, we have lived with a piece of property that we don't personally own. That's, you know, part of the village, part of the community, part of the county that has been and has continued to fall in disrepair. It is unsightly. Everyone comments on it. It has been a long time in trying to achieve a solution here, and that engineering report came in a long time ago. And that engineering report came in a long time ago where we selected and chose and commented and offered that it should be consistent with the improvements that were planned at the time and have been put in place on the edge on Hudson. It will be a beautiful continual experience on that Riverwalk, which unfortunately you didn't address in your state of the village letter, nor was it apparent in the beautiful video, which was very well produced, I might add. It's something we can't avoid any longer. And I know it's gone out for rebid and it's beyond, I don't know what to say, but the fact that there was an $800,000 charge, I think, for a barge that wasn't included in the bid or the contractor couldn't deliver. Why couldn't we access through Beekman Park? Or why wasn't there another solution approached? It's just really, really frustrating and we're bearing the brunt. We've had development around us for years. We're going to experience it again when the DPW moves and there'll be development going on across the street from us. We're really good, kind, cooperative neighbors. Please give us some priority here in getting this repaired. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Would anyone else like to address, yes, ma'am?
I'm Elizabeth Tucker. I live at 135 Gordon Avenue. Wanted to talk to you about plans for improving pedestrian safety in the inner village. I see that there's pedestrian signals have recently gone up at the corner of Beekman and North Washington and that's a step in the right direction, but I think there's some more intersections that have been slated for improvement that we need to keep the momentum going and continue forward with the improvements for Chestnut and Valley, Kendall and Beekman, Clinton and Beekman, McCantico and Beekman, North Washington and Beekman. And those six intersections are part of a group of 11 intersections that were originally studied for improvement. So hopefully soon, we can get through the six that are in the planning stage and move on to the remaining five that were part of the original study that was done six years ago. I had a conversation with Mr. Wally, who's the principal of Morse School on Beekman Avenue, and he couldn't make it here tonight because of the snowstorm because he lives up in New Paltz, but he wrote the letter and asked me to read it. Dear Village of Sleepy Hollow trustees, I am writing in support of the project to enhance pedestrian safety. I urge you especially to consider the safety of our six through eight-year-old children walking to school with their family members and remind you that in second grade, children are considered old enough to walk home alone when they live near the school. Because of this, we hope all the crosswalks in the inner village that are slated for safety upgrades can be finished as soon as possible. The intersection at Beekman and McCantico, which adjoins our school property, is a high priority. I appreciate you providing time to hear my concerns. Sincerely, Mr. Wally.
Thank you. Could you provide a copy of that letter to Mr. Giacchio?
Sure. I printed this from a computer, but I'm sorry, I can send forward you the email.
The email, thank you.
Sure. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to address the board? I'm going to behind, yes, sir.
So my name is Robert Chivers. I live at, in Ichabod's Landing as well with my fellow neighbors. I won't repeat everything that they said, but I concur in a gray. And I also think that with the video, the branding, we're missing a great opportunity to accent and highlight the waterfront and just reiterate that I'd like to see this thing done through completion relatively as reasonably practicable. Again, I don't want to repeat what Greg and Judy had said, but I echo their sentiments as well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Anne White of Kendall Way. I have just three quick notes this evening, maps. Please, I hope there are up-to-date maps available. I have at home some probably 10-year-old zoning maps that are nice and big like this and a park map, but I don't know of the availability of a current map. And this question came up at Kendall when people received your annual report, Mr. Mayor, and they said, "All these things are wonderful, but we have no idea where they are." And so I would like to have a large map to put up at Kendall to show where all these projects are that are going on and that might apply also to the website. Second, in terms of parking, I know this may be beyond our budget, but one of the issues is people having to drive around to find a parking space. I know there exists technology that they had in Pasadena when I was living there which allows you to learn where there's a parking space available. This may be beyond the village, but I hope as you're looking into different technologies that you might at least look at this. And I recognize it may be very expensive. Finally, the clock at the head of Beekman. I don't know who changes the time, but they haven't done it yet. For the first, for the first time this year, I happen to be, I'm a night owl and I was up at about five minutes to two and I thought, oh, I wonder what actually happens to change the time. So I sat with my iPhone for five minutes and watched it, 1:59, 1:59, 1:59, 3 o'clock. And it was an enlightening experience. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Would anyone else like to address the board? Yeah, well, hang on a second, Mr. Solanti. Just want to make sure that everybody else who wanted to speak had an opportunity. We go seconds after everybody's, yeah.
Hi, I'm Percenarius. I live at 47 DePister Street and I came tonight just in favor of continued efforts to improve walkability. I was part of that walkability study that happened six years ago and my son that I was bringing with then is now in kindergarten. So I know things sometimes move slowly and I have to applaud the slow baby steps we've taken. I saw great pilot stuff happening and I'm not far from my house at Courtland and DePister. I was so excited when I saw the peating on the pavement to try to show the bump outs and I look forward to when the next steps happen. Same with the intersection of Beekman and Courtland. I think it's a great prototype and I think the communication of that to the community is important that everybody even realizes it's a prototype and more is to come. And I know I've been before your board advocating for improvements at McCantico and Beekman and elsewhere in the village. So I'm still a big supporter, looking forward to, I know, I think there's money allocated for it, so just hoping I can get released and spend and those improvements continue to be made for everyone that's walking downtown.
Thank you. Hang on one second, Mr. Solanti. Anyone else who hasn't gone yet, like to speak to, Mr. Solanti?
My name is Michael Solanti and I'm here to help the village correct the salt. I want to know the status with the retaining wall of Kingland Point Park is, it was falling down and, you know, we're missing a big opportunity to open a beach on the Hudson River. I mean, over Rockland and Nyack, they have a beach open. So apparently the water is saving up for people to swim in. And now, that's one thing. The second thing is parking. Now, we have this property on Beekman Avenue, all right? Maybe it's not big enough. Maybe we'll have to make it a bigger parking lot so that you can enter on Beekman and you can exit off of North Washington Street or Chestnut, either or. I don't know if there's any property on Chestnut Street when we have an exit, but maybe on North Washington Street, it might be possible. But parking is a problem here. So if we have parking, we'll generate more business to the village, especially in the downtown area. I mean, this is the main drag, Beekman Avenue. And this, where the people, and the people that live in VT, they need overnight parking. There's an opportunity here to find a landlord that owns that property on Beekman Avenue and if it's not big enough, we'll make it, we'll have to make it bigger. In other words, we'll have to demolish at least one building, maybe two. But if you have the parking, for people to come to the village, they'll come to the village. But like people addressed before, you've got to drive around, drive around, look for a parking space, look for a, and how much you've got to drive around? An hour worth driving around just to find a parking space? It's ridiculous. Go to shopping malls, just play the parking, right? So I suggest the village look into who owns the property on Beekman Avenue, how much they want for the property. The village could make revenue. You could have overnight parking or parking permits where people buy like they do for the banner, for the village banner station. And now we'll get to the railroad now. The railroad under all the platforms, totally filled with litter, not only the Hudson Line, the Rehaven Line and the Harlem Line, all three lines, total garbage. Just look on the platforms, filled with garbage.
Mr. Solanti, your time is up?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you. I would just remind everyone that we have a separate opportunity in our regular meetings, including tonight, to address the board after we do resolutions, new business, but all this before we end the meeting. So if anybody had some thoughts and we're still thinking about it, please stick around and you can address this later. I wanted to quickly just address a couple of things. First of all, the failed seawall at Ichabod's. Yes, we did put a bid out. Yes, we did take all the potential bidders down to the site and walk them through and say, "This is what you're going to be bidding on. Here's what it works." So every single one of them had the opportunity to look at that and say, "How am I going to get in and out of here? How am I going to get my equipment and all the, everything that I'm going to need in order to do that?" So we didn't have a particular reason to think that somebody just left that out and didn't allow for it. Unfortunately, the winning bid did exactly that. So we were faced with a problem. We were looking at saying, fine, we have authorized the money, we borrowed the money. So we did that, we got the bid out, we were ready to go. And then we get this contract, it's like, well, where am I going to bring my stuff in from? It's like, you didn't figure that out? I mean, it was incredibly frustrating, more frustrating for you guys because it's your front yard, but incredibly frustrating for us as well. So we're faced with a choice. We either force the contractor to go ahead with the job, which they would have then, council will tell me if I'm using the right word here, they would have defaulted on because their inability to bring things in.
There were logistical issues in terms of.
Okay. Very good. Let the record show that there were logistical issues, but, you know, but if there were logistical issues that stopped the job from moving forward, then we're placed in a position where we have to take some sort of legal action in order to make the job happen, which who knows how long that's going to take. So what we did instead was say, okay, look, you guys aren't going to be able to do this under the current bid. We want to rebid the project. You guys going to be cool with that and not, we're not going to get into some big legal thing? Yes, you can bid on it and all of that. Got that agreement and we're able to get the job rebid now. I think the bids are due this week?
They're out this week.
They're out this week. So we've got a couple of weeks. So, you know, we hear you, we understand your frustration. We are fairly certain that this time around, that the people that bid on this job will get it about how they can actually access the waterfront in front of your homes and we're going to move on from there. So, you know, we hear you loud and clear and we are moving forward with this project. I just wanted to give you that update on where we are. Just a couple of other quick thoughts on, two things, just the walkability downtown and our ongoing efforts to improve certain intersections and also parking was raised a couple of times in the comments tonight. We just, I love pointing out that check, but we just got a grant, a New York Forward Grant, that will focus on our downtown, really Route 9 to River Street, Beekman, down to Sykes Park and our commercial, the main streets there being Courtland, Beekman and Valley Street. And that grant is going to give all of you and all of us an opportunity to look really closely at what we want to see downtown. So those walkability improvements that we've already thought of, they would be part of that process. Parking, new parking, changes in parking, how we address parking, all of those kinds of things would be part of it as well. And when I say process, it very much is a very public process. We're going to be receiving an assignment essentially of a planning firm to work with the village. The state will be assigning us a professional firm to work with to help us through this process. That's probably going to happen late spring, maybe the beginning of the summer. The state has already told us that they're paying for that. It's not coming out of the four and a half million, which is good. They've also told us that they expect the planning process to be complete within seven months. So relatively quick for something like this. There will be, as part of that, there will be public forums, public hearings. We obviously had a number of projects that we put into our application, which is, excuse me, which is why we got the grant because we, number, one of the reasons we got the grant, there's a lot that went into that, but those will all be reviewed and there'll be the opportunity for additional projects to come forward as part of this process. So I just wanted to remind everybody about this. It's not just a nice big chunk of money over there. It's a very real, intensive, local process and I want to encourage all of you to participate that, in that, when we move forward on that. So keep watching this space and we'll be announcing soon when we're going to be moving forward with that. So I want to thank you for your comments this evening and we're going to move on to resolutions now. And as I said before, if you have additional comments, you can address the board, you can do so at the end of the meeting. Can somebody take first resolution?
Resolution of all trustees of Village of Sleepy Hollow to adopt adjusted base proportions. We resolved that the board of trustees of Village of Sleepy Hollow that's hereby adopted the following. The certificate of base percentage, current percentage of current base proportions pursuant to Article 19 of the Real Property Tax Law or the Levi of the taxes of 2023 Village Assessment Rule as prepared by the Office of the Village Assessor. The certificate of adjusted base proportion pursuant to Article 19 of the Real Property Tax Law or the Levi of taxes of 2023 Village Assessment Rule as prepared by the Village Assessor. The class tax shares adopted for the Village Levi Rule 2023 as absent any local adjustments as provided of the Real Property Tax Law.
Please create.
1903-3, the tax class shares are homestead 55.88%, non-homestead 44.4112%. So move. So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Poser abstentions? All right, resolution is approved.
Resolution of the Board of Trustees of the Village of Sleepy Hollow authorizing the mayor to sign an IMA agreement with the County of Westchester to enforce DWI prosecution. Whereas the County of Westchester offers a program to local municipalities to assist in enforcing the laws pertaining to driving while intoxicated and related charges, where the county reimburses the local municipalities for its participation. Whereas the Board of Trustees desires to support the enforcement of these laws and encourages the apprehension and prosecution of all violators, now therefore be resolved, the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the mayor to execute the attached IMA agreement with the County of Westchester. So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Poser abstentions? Resolution is approved.
Resolution of the Board of Trustees of the Village of Sleepy Hollow committing to the improvements to Beekman Avenue, Valley Street, and Cortland Street projects. Whereas the village has been recommended for a $250,000 state and municipal facilities grant for improvements to Beekman Avenue, Valley Street, and Cortland Street. And whereas the dormitory authority of the State of New York is conducting reviews prior to authorizing the grant funding, excuse me, which would require documentation of approval of the $50,000 match to the grant. And whereas the $50,000 will be included in borrowing via bond anticipation notes to be presented to the board in September 2023 for approval. Now be it resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby commits to the improvements to Beekman Avenue, Valley Street, and Cortland Street project, which has a total budget of $300,000, and commits to the $50,000 matching funds required to complete the project. So seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Poser abstentions? Resolution is approved. The next several resolutions are all appointments that I would like to make and which require approval by this board. I could make all leading appointments, and we could do one resolution.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Counsel, I'm... Let's with a question and I...
As long as they know what they're voting on, it's fine. They don't want to do it.
Well, it's my pleasure to appoint Benji Sirota of North Washington to the Planning Board, and to appoint Suzanne Jones of Kelborn Avenue to the Environmental Advisory Committee, to appoint Wendy Yancey to the North Tarrytown Housing Authority Board, and to appoint Michelle Spino to the Public Space Council. And I would appreciate an affirmation of those appointments by this board.
Motion to approve those appointments, as the mayor just repeated. Seconded?
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Poser abstentions? Thank you for those approvals. And thank you to each one of the four of them for stepping forward and volunteering for the village. We appreciate your time. I hope you know what you're getting into. Whoever told you, it's always more time than you were told, okay? But we appreciate you stepping up. So thank you.
All right, one more resolution. Resolution of the Board of Trustees of the Village of Sleepy Hollow hiring seasonal staff for the public works. Whereas the Department of Public Works budgeted for a seasonal worker for the current year. And whereas the Superintendent of Public Works, Kevin Smith, properly advertised his position and has conducted numerous interviews and has deemed this applicant qualified. And whereas Mr. Smith has recommended to hire Nicholas Rama of Osning on a seasonal basis, not to exceed four months. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and the Board of Trustees of the Village of Sleepy Hollow hereby approve Mr. Smith's recommendation of Nicholas Rama of Osning, New York, to be hired effective March 20, 2023, not to exceed four months at an hourly rate of $18, and to be under the supervision of the DPW foreman. And be it further resolved, a background check for this applicant has been completed and is satisfactory. So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Poser abstentions? Resolution is approved.
And I will take our final resolution of the evening. Resolution of the Board of Trustees of the Village of Sleepy Hollow accepting employees' resignation. Whereas Andrea Rugiro has submitted a letter of resignation as part-time intermediate clerk for the police department effective March 15, 2023. And whereas said letter of resignation must be formally accepted by the Village of Sleepy Hollow Board of Trustees. And whereas the village by resolution number 07138-03 dated July 15, 2003, adopted a policy for employee termination and rehire. And now therefore be it resolved that the village accepts the letter of resignation of Andrea Rugiro and finds that the termination/rehire policy of July 15, 2003 applies. And be it further resolved that a copy of the policy were placed in his personal record with proof of service. So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Just want to note that there's a typo in the... If further resolved, it's a pronouns, a her, she, the she.
Moved as amended?
Seconded.
I mean, oh, I'm not moving yet.
Moved as amended.
Seconded again.
All right. All in favor? Any further comments or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Poser abstentions? All right, the resolution is approved. Move on to old business or new business? Anybody have anything to raise under old business or new business?
Ken, I'll just mention one thing. I'm glad to hear that earlier you mentioned we're going to start a parking workroom. I think it's a really good idea. I know there's been a lot of discussion over the last probably month and a half over parking regulations at specific, you know, communities, as well as permits and home rule. So to me, I think there's just a lot to discuss, and it makes a lot of sense to have a workroom. So glad that's happening.
Actually, just to touch on one of the ideas that was presented during the public comment period about having the ability to track when there are spaces open in particular areas, the apps do that. So we'd have that ability. We could prevent people circling around, which would be great.
This is great. We're heading towards something where everybody's... Well, it's kind of a stupid thing to say. Everybody knows where I am all the time. Anybody has a phone? And they probably know what I'm going to do next, too. And they have sold that information somewhere.
They have, yeah.
Well, what I'm going to do next is move on to public comments. Does anyone have a desire to address the board? Okay, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, and good night.